We call the Harvard Department of Education Hybrid Regular Republic Meeting to order. We are meeting here at the Harvard School. And we're in New Jersey, year ago. New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act was enacted to ensure the public to have advanced notice of candidates and public bodies who would do any business affected or interests to discuss or act upon. In compliance to the Open Public Meetings Act, the Harvard Department of Education has caused notice of this meeting, setting forth time, date, and location to these events and publications to the home news Tribune and Star-Later and post on the board's website. At least 48 hours advance this meeting. Members of the public who wish to address the board will be given the opportunity to do so before the board adjourns from meeting. You're welcome. Ms. McAllen?
Here.
Ms. Coleman? Ms. Allen?
Here.
Mr. Krueger?
Here.
Ms. McBaden-DiNicolà? Ms. Bruce?
Here.
Mr. Wisslewicz? Ms. Voorhees?
Here.
Mr. Woodward?
Here.
We're not going to recess through executive session. Being resolved pursuant to the Sunshine Act, NJSA 10:4, v. 12 and 13, the Harvard Department of Education will now meet in closed session to discuss matters related to HIB and stewardess claim. These exemptions are permitted to be discussed in closed session in accordance with NJSA 10:4, v. 13. Information regarding the board's closed session is special will be disclosed to the public as soon as the need for confidentiality and order exists. So make your motion to recess through executive session.
Sess.
All in favor?
Aye.
Make a motion that we link to the regular session?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
On to the next one.
I collectively did apply to the United States of America and to be solid with the stand, one nation under God, invincible with liberty and justice for all.
I've had the chance to say welcome. It's so nice to see some people going through the country and being here with us. So it's always really nice. So we are going to present the audience. We're going to go through a few points of business. That's why I get these comments with our students spotlight. It's all in one hand and one hand. But I'll remember again what we think through. And there are a long list of communications. Well, all of them that I look through are related to, almost all of them are related to our start time changes. One about middle school music. Okay, so in the most part, that's where the communications came from. We have minutes to approve. We're going to be approving the Hybrid Regular Reorganization Meeting January 3rd. And Hybrid Public Regular Executive Session Meetings of January 20th. So I think that we approve the minutes of those two meetings.
Second.
Second.
You want to vote for them? Ms. McAllen?
Yes.
Did you hear me? Yes, thank you. Ms. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Krueger?
Yes.
Ms. Bruce?
Yes.
Mr. Wisslewicz?
Yes.
Ms. Voorhees?
Yes.
Mr. Woodward?
Yes.
Okay, we can move on to our superintendent of course. So we're ready. Part two, can't hear.
So you have the microphone. You have to make sure your microphone is on and speak into the microphone.
As of Piers? Yes? Let us know.
Much better.
Okay. So we're reading the Read Across America Week. It's our first week of English that we're receiving shares of love and beauty with refugees and more families. Our families are right as a boy and sister throughout everything and every time on Friday. And this Friday, we also put forth that some bright readers coming in from classes. At Bardell School, we also have a Read Across America Week where each day is a different theme. There is also the Peaks and Valleys and Brothers Program hosting a Black History Month celebration tomorrow, Tuesday, February 28th. And it's going to be an afternoon of poetry, song, dance, and stepping. For the middle school, February this month is Friendship Month, and every day we give us things something new to try. Today is the Read and Celebrate Friends holiday. And this week, the Read Across America Spirit Week. See how, and there's a flyer with how they celebrate. Monday is the Read and Games of Bright Futures. We're going to wear neon colors. Then Tuesday is reading, it's fun to sit down. And Wednesday is socks. And Thursday is hot for a good book. And Friday is cold yet a good book, so it's creatures. And all of those teachers and students contributed to ideas to create our new vision and vision statement. We say it every Friday, and it's hanging on the cafeteria. It's people up. So this is the vision statement at Harvard High School. Is our strong building to be owls. In nature, owls are known to be incredibly wild and cunning. They are independent thinkers, observant listeners, and strong flyers. As owls and people, we are known to make a live vision of being great observers of believing, inclusive, and supportive of everyone. For things about how our words and actions can impact others, for listening and making respectful round passes, the most important final trend is to teach them every day, be an owl. And for March Day, we're doing the March Mountain. This is an incentive program to celebrate students who don't work, which students will earn additional time outside of their work. And finally, for the high school, this week, the class of 2026 will be rescheduling for the next year. And come out and support the HP Thrift on March 9th and 10th after school in the cafeteria from 3:30 to 6:00 p.m. For a student-led nonprofit, you can help support the environment. We'll also get fashionable and affordable clothing. All of our funds go to the Amazon Conservation Society, which helps protect the Amazon rainforest. If you would like to donate or sell some of your clothes, please DM them at HPHS underscore thrift on Instagram or contact Isabel Arcaida. The chili cook-off is back. Please join us on Saturday, March 4th in the cafeteria for the competition at 5:00 PM. Come out and vote for your favorite chili and guacamole and help raise funds for the music department. And lastly, the Time of the Month Period Project and the Team Center, we will stake a menstrual product drive to help and improve poverty. Products will be collected during the month of March Women's History Month. Ink bins will be located by the front doors of the whole school and dining hall area. Products will be given to the National Council for Jewish Women and distributed to a local domestic violence shelter. Please donate menstrual products during the month of March to help end period poverty. Thank you. Any questions or comments for our student representatives?
Thank you for the very packed before presentation this evening. Very exciting, thank you.
Thank you. We're going to move on to our superintendent of course and our student spotlight. Any questions?
Thank you. So good evening, everybody. I'm really excited to have Ms. McNally here to showcase some of our lovely Irving Dragons. We're very excited. So I'm going to invite Ms. McNally up to the podium, and I'll join you with some certificates and a camera for photo ops.
All right.
Good evening, everybody. Thanks for being here tonight. It's so nice to see so many of your bright shiny faces on this cold, windy evening. I feel like it's the first evening we've actually had winter. And good evening to all of you. Thank you again. This is always one of my favorite evenings when I have to stay after school. I love coming to address so many of our students. And when we do student spotlight, a little bit about how Irving does it, our teachers are the ones who nominate our students. And then we come together as a committee, and we select those students that we're going to push forward to be here tonight. It's not very easy because we have so many wonderful students. So the students that are here that we are recognizing tonight are just a snapshot of what we serve. Awesome. So let's get started. No particular order. Arjun, I see you. Would you like to come up? Awesome. So let's talk a little bit about you. Mrs. DeMarco and Ms. Daly highly recommended you for this award. Do you know why? Well, because you're awesome. I can serve that. But you come to class every single day, ready to learn. You're respectful. You're kind to your friends and your teachers. You are always attentive. That's a big word. It means you're always paying attention to your learning. And you take every opportunity to learn and grow. You enjoy being challenged. Do love to learn, especially new things. Well, that's what they said about you, too. You help your peers in the art room, and you care about making beautiful pieces and helping your classmates love art as well. You have a love of learning and respect for others that is evident in your behavior and in your interactions with your friends. So congratulations. All right, next up, Cameron and Co., I see you down there. So our next student that we're going to spotlight this evening is Cameron Shelling. Thanks for coming. All right, Cameron. So you were nominated by your teacher, Mrs. Lucas. And Mrs. DeMarco, your art teacher, also had really awesome things to say there as well. Would you like to hear them? Go ahead. You are a very teachable child. You are eager to learn. You follow directions as soon as they are given. Do you do that at home, too? Just making sure. You are a very hard worker, and you love being challenged. You excel in all areas of your learning because of your ability to focus and care about learning. You are always one of the first students to get your work done. But it's not just about finishing your work. Your work is always correct and done with love and care. You get along well with all of your friends. You're respectful, and you totally deserve this award. And Mrs. DeMarco said, in her own words to me, that you epitomize what it is to be an Irving Dragon. You are kind, helpful, respectful. Again, you love a challenge. And you are always ready to help a teacher or another friend. And what Mrs. DeMarco said she loves the most about you is that you really make connections between your learning and your life. So you like to talk about things that you do as a family when you're learning, which is super important. So thank you for being an Irving Dragon. And congratulations for this honor. Thank you for coming. All right, and our last student spotlight is Isabel Gomez. I know she could not be here this evening. But she was also recommended by our first grade team for the spotlight. So I'd like to talk a little bit about Isabel tonight. She is bright, enthusiastic. She loves to learn, ask questions, share her knowledge. And she is an excellent friend to her peers. She consistently shows all of her teachers empathy toward her classmates. She's the first to help an upset classmate or be a friend to a new student. Isabel is to be commended on her effort and hard work under academics, as well as her social, emotional growth. She is conscientious and a pleasure to have in all of her classes. So congratulations to Isabel. And I'll make sure she gets her award in the morning. So thank you, everybody. Again, thank you for taking the time to come. I know it's not easy at night. But again, it's joy, your children. I love having them in Irving, and I love having your family as part of our school community. So thanks for coming. Congratulations again. This is, I love when we get to do the spotlight, and especially our Irving Dragons. It's such a happy place. So thank you, thank you so much, Ms. McNally. At this point, I'm going to move on to the next part of my reportment, which is a presentation on modular classrooms. So of course, you're all invited to stay for my wonderful presentation on modular classrooms to support the expansion of our full-day preschool in Irving. However, if you have other things to do, including, be mindful of the weather. Feel free to leave at any time. You don't have to stay. But thank you, and thanks so much for coming out and supporting students. We appreciate it. Okay. Well, I'm glad that Ms. McNally stayed for this wonderful presentation. So as you know, we've been reporting out on the expansion of our full-day preschool. I want to share that we had an informational session that was packed. The media center in Irving was packed with people. So thank you, Ms. McNally, for putting on a wonderful presentation. It was great to see a lot of community members come out in support of our full-day preschool expansion program. Part of the expansion comes with the possibility of modular classrooms outside of the building. So I wanted to give you a presentation so that you're aware of what modular classrooms are and some of the options that would be afforded to us for next year. So tonight, the overview will be some information about modular classrooms, including pictures and floor plans. In addition, we'll talk about the Finance and Facilities Committee meeting with myself and Ms. McNally to tour the grounds and decide on availability of both Irving and Bardell for the work to discuss tonight. So we looked at Irving's options, options at Irving, options at Bardell, and then some of the costs associated with all these options. So first, like I said, our need for modular classrooms. Right now, we do not have space within any of our four buildings to expand full-day preschool. One of the requirements set forth by the New Jersey Department of Education is that preschool must be in the school building. By New Jersey DOE code, it cannot be in a modular classroom. So that's first and foremost. The preschool has to be in there. There's a certain amount of square footage requirements for preschool classroom in addition to bathroom and storage space. So there's a lot of very particular information that goes with preschool. So we don't really have existing space to expand beyond our current capacity. In fact, without the additional space, we would only be able to offer two classes next year instead of our current four half-day classes that we offer now. So if we don't include modular spaces or any other space, we would actually have to decrease the amount of students that would be enrolled in a full-day program next year. Why, I would be strongly advocating for pushing modular classrooms at the beginning of our move toward universal pre-8 for all students. And like I said, the classrooms cannot be used for preschool, so it would require that we shift either kindergarten or first grade classes to the modular classroom so that the preschool can be accommodated inside the building. So some more information about modular classrooms. They do have restrooms. So they do have versions that have restrooms inside of them. They also have versions that don't have restrooms inside of them. They have versions that have office spaces inside of them. They have versions that have storage space inside of them. So they really do have a lot of options available. They have programmable climate controls, so they have heating and air conditioning. They are ADA compliant with the American Disabilities Act. They are compliant with ramps and space in bathrooms as well with candles and rails. So they are ADA compliant. They are high-quality interior and exterior finishes. And they're actually available for lease or for purchase. So I don't know if you've seen on the road, there, you know, people get modular homes as their permanent house. So you can purchase them or you can lease them. In addition, they have used and new models. And there's definitely a big variation on the price for both of those that I won't have the word considered tonight as well. But it is important to know that used models, like used cars, are, some are available, some are not available, and they're sort of first come, first served bases. So some information about that. The new models we look at are pretty much double the price of a used model. Not only are they more expensive, but they're not available until at least July. So that's important to note. And there are a couple used models that I have on hold right now, just in case we do want to move forward with them because they're a hot commodity, especially being because we're not the only school district expanding preschool. Used models are cheaper, and they're available a lot sooner, about half the price. And that's important because we have to, when the modular classroom comes and gets delivered to us, if we do the bathrooms in there, the electric, the fire code, the internet, everything set up, it's going to take some time. And we'd like to do that late spring, early summer, if possible, so that it can be ready to go because although our preschool will starting to launch with refers, the preschool isn't going into those buildings. It's either kindergarten or first grade classes. So we do need to make sure by the end of August those spaces are available for teachers to come in and set up their classrooms. So not only do we have to set up the modular units and get them ready to go, but we also have to move the furniture in there. We need time for the facilities to move the furniture in there, tech to get in there. So it is a lot of setup work. In addition, the modular classrooms do come with anywhere between two- to three-year leases. The minimum is two years to lease a modular classroom. So I just put up some pictures as best as you can see. I'm sorry if they're small for people that are with us in person. But you can see they're really spacious. They look like normal classes. So they're spacious. There's definitely ample lighting. Like I said, we can put internet access out there so they'll have access points with internet. They'll have everything that are in classrooms in the normal building would have, like age back, electric, plumbing, and the like. So like you can see, they have windows, doors, fire code, they need egress. So they need all the requirements. So we looked at some of the spaces. So at Irving, we look at an option for two modular classrooms and four modular classrooms. So the two modular classrooms, you can see the setback. It doesn't have to be set far back there. But you have, well, it's hard to see because it's written in black. But Irving code is five foot from the building where the fence. So we do have to be mindful of egress in terms of the situation of our modular classrooms and where they are to the current building. So you can see they propose that we have the two modular classrooms set back. If I can point out here, here is the basketball hoop. So they would sit right in front of the basketball hoop on that asphalt right there. So it's already pretty much level and ready to go on that asphalt. So this would be if we did two modular classrooms. We could move it up a little bit if we wanted to, which is an option as well, as long as we're within the appropriate distance from the building. So this would be what the plot would look like with a two-unit with two bathrooms. If Irving went to a four-modular. So this is very interesting because we found out that it's cheaper, I think, possibly, to do two modular units than one four-modular unit. And that is because the two-modular unit comes in as a setup of two. The four-modular unit has to come up and set up like five pieces. So it's more expensive. I've done a lot of research, and we had a lot of conversations about modular classrooms. So regardless, if we went with four units, it would take up the entire asphalt space there. So the play space that would still be the playground as it is. So nothing would change with the playground. So students would come out of the building and then go this way to the playground for recess. And then there are these picnic tables back there. I just, the picnic table area.
Yeah, the state and garden.
The state and garden area, which I don't see students often playing back there for recess, but maybe they do.
Depends.
Depending. So this would be the recess area. So either if we do two units, we're taking up a chunk of the space there. If we do four units, we're taking up pretty much the whole space there. In addition, the door to access Irving right now is control card access. So in order to get, for safety purposes, in order to get in and out of the building, you need a swipe card to get in and out of the building. So just something to note because I will say that if you have modular classrooms with bathrooms, they are going to be more expensive than modular classrooms without bathrooms. However, Ms. McNally and I would like to strongly advocate for the bathrooms, for our littles to go in and out of the building to have to go to the bathrooms. Might be problematic. We don't have enough staff to escort them all the time. And they can go to the bathroom frequently. And again, like I said, this swipe card access is important that we don't want to, that we can't get a swipe card to get in now. So that would be a concern. So we really like to recommend the bathrooms within the units. And then we do have our age back maintenance specialist in-house, who is going to be going on a site visit to another school that has the modular classrooms with the bathrooms to look at the specs because we have to attach the waste to the sewer line in the building. So it doesn't go out to the street to the sewer. It goes to the building and then to the sewer. So again, currently, there are two classrooms with used modulars available for lease. So we did put them on hold, just in case. This was the avenue we wanted to go. Anything used, we could put on hold, just in case. And this is one that is, this is just a picture of what one looks like. So I mean, not the prettiest color, but it's used. It's available. You can see it has a ramp to get on and off. So it's ADA compliant. And plenty of windows as well. And this would be the setup, the blueprint of the two-classroom modular unit that's available for lease. So you can see the doors. Then each classroom has a bathroom. The four modular unit, and they're all, they all meet the requirements for New Jersey Code for kindergarten or first grade class sizes. So those classrooms, that was important for us as well to make sure that they met code. So you can see the four-classroom unit has technically two bathrooms, but multiple, like you went into school, multiple stalls and sinks. We did explore the property at Bardell as well. So behind Bardell, in the back, is a kickball, baseball field-ish by the playground. Right now, affectionately known as the mud pit because it's very hard to root grass there. So this area would be the recommendation. We could either do a four-modular classroom if we wanted to explore Irving for a four-modular classroom space. There's a little bit more of a challenge in Irving at Bardell because there's a big drain pipe that goes in the back. This is the parking lot here, and this is the building. A drain pipe that goes in the back. And this is the police station that drains back into the, into the police station. And then we also did explore six modular classrooms that would take up that whole big area at Bardell as well. Some of the concerns that I know of that I'm sure the Finance and Facilities will talk about, included that if we put modular classrooms at Bardell, we would have to shift a grade level. So that means then 3K and K would be at Irving. First through fifth would be at Bardell. I would probably need more administrative and school counseling support because right now, that's four grade levels, one counselor, one principal at Bardell. If I add an additional grade level, I would definitely need more support. I'm not sure where the budget would stand on that, but that is not. So that is a big shift for our community. And again, we're looking at probably a two-year. We're looking at leasing, or let's say, modulators for two years as we grow our preschool program and explore some of our other options that we're continuing to do as well. So we did explore these options. We talked about some of the concerns. But I did want to make it publicly known that we did explore the options and we looked at some of the options. and we looked at some of those choices. So some of the costs, again, for leasing, the two-classroom used unit for 24 months is $2,138. And four-classroom unit for 24 months is $6,130. And both of them have significant installation and removal costs. So something to make a note of as well. We would like to see possibly doing, again, the recommendation would be a four-classroom unit at Irving with bathrooms. I know it's more expensive, but that would be, we'd actually be able to open more than 60 spots for our pre-K next year, which would be great, because we did see a lot of families turn out and know there is a high need for it in the district. Not only that, but if we're doing it for two years, that would be our second year anyway. We'd have to expand, hopefully, year two. By the two-year mark, we should have our feasibility study passed, made decisions on bond referendum, possibly, if we're going to be building. We're still exploring some land in Highland Park that we might be able to acquire and build on as well for a primary, a pre-K building. So we have some other options that we're still exploring. Hopefully, child, local childcare facilities will want to partner off with us too. So we're still exploring those options, but at least this gives us two years we can grow our pre-K program and over the next two years while we're considering some other options as well. So I'll go down to the board right now for any questions or comments. Thank you.
Have we had this discussion yet with the borough?
Yeah.
Sorry. Have we had this discussion yet with borough and whether or not they would be, whether or not this has to go through the planning board, if it's reviewed and meet the code requirements? And I think there's like a belt to the up how long we can have a temporary structure in Highland Park and whether or not we can vary it from that, et cetera. Where are we at that portion of reviewing this?
Yeah, so we did talk, we did name it the Fire Marshal or Code, and he gave us all the, so what we saw on these pictures are basically that meeting with the borough in terms of what we're allowed to do and what we're not allowed to do. I'm not sure, Liv, if you know, any response in terms of the length of time in which we can have them, that I'm not familiar with, but I can write them down and get back to you.
No, we probably have to check the code.
Just write that down.
The cost, the cost of installation and removal on the four-classroom used unit?
I just said compared to the cost of installation of the two-classroom used unit.
Yeah, significantly greater, and that's because it comes in more chunks.
Yeah, correct.
And so, so we could do two, two-used ones. So it'd be, it'd be cheaper to do two, two-used ones than one, four-used one.
Including installation. Or certainly per monthly cost.
Yes, per monthly cost, yes.
But also, what about the installation?
Yes.
So it's more than double?
Yes.
To install it? Round numbers, 100 and 125, 100?
It was 100 each for the two-classroom units and 500 in total for the four-classroom unit.
That 100 in total?
It was, it was two, two eighty in installation. And then they said that usually the removal is a little bit less, because we don't have to take it as far.
So the installation and the initial quote that we got at 49,000, that's no longer in there?
No, no, that's why I'm saying it's 100, because that was 49 installation. They said removal is a little bit less. So I just rounded, I just rounded it about to 100 total.
So it's 100 total for installing two, two-classroom units?
No, 100 each.
Each?
100 each.
That's all the record, that installation as removal.
I'm just thinking about installation.
Oh.
Okay, so because, because there's two different budgets we're talking about. And for anyone who doesn't have the details, while the state will give us the money to pay for the teachers in the room and some other costs, the state will not pay for either leasing or renting or building space for pre-K. They normally give us money for busing. So this would get very, very expensive for a district that has certainly had monetary issues in the past. It's always clear. The lease costs that are up there, that's a monthly cost.
Correct.
And this is only for the units themselves. It's not for the fixtures, desks.
Right.
And it also doesn't include monthly maintenance.
Correct. So we were talking about that too. We may have to increase our custodial staff for cleaning. In addition, so the, the, we don't have to purchase new furniture, because we'd be taking, let's say, two first-grade classes' furniture and putting it in there. The money that we get for the pre-K funding does include furniture and supplies for pre-K rooms. So we don't have to worry about that. But we do, and I think we have a couple of access points that we had purchased from E-Rate Monday a couple of years ago, so that shouldn't be a problem. But we do have to run the wiring, you do have to get the fires and code. Plumbing is the cost, the electric is a cost. So all of those things are included in this, this as well. So there are additional costs, so this is an all-inclusive cost.
And would this also increase our insurance costs?
Well, we would be additional liability. Um, it's our property and I'm not sure if they hold the insurance on it, but I'm sure they want us to be additionally insured. So I'm sorry, are you making, can we get two of the?
Double units?
Yes. Oh, okay.
Yes.
So four-classroom used unit, you meant two?
Two, two-classroom, yes.
Okay, sorry.
Yes, yes. Two, two-classroom units. But four, so originally, we had thought about doing, originally, we had said we would open up 65 next year for four total classes.
Right.
Which, depending on our registration, we can definitely do. But if we do, if we have two more additional, that's an additional 30 extra spots, because we're pre-k and only hold 15 students that per classroom.
Okay, so this would give us 60 spots and then we'll get some other spots.
If we went with four classrooms, we would have enough pre-K for 90. Am I doing math right?
I thought it was 15 for a classroom.
15, 30?
90.
90.
90.
90.
Four modules.
So you have two classrooms in the school.
Yeah. Plus, two in the classroom in the school, yes. I'm sorry, additional, yes. Total, I'm talking total spots, yes.
Gotcha, gotcha.
Because I'm not, because I'm not thinking the modulars as pre-K classrooms.
Right, right.
I have them in my head in the building, sorry.
Right, sorry.
So just to reiterate the numbers again. If we did two, two-classroom units, that would cost us not covered, at least not covered by the state, it would cost us about 50,000 leasing costs, 25,000 each. It would cost us installation, again, only this year, about 150K. So we're talking about 150,000 of revenue that we work, money that we have to find that the state won't help us with, plus perhaps additional costs of transportation, for what we get at 90 children going to our nursery school, completely paid for by the state. Okay, well, that's not bad. Especially for the families, you know, who need this. As Chris has said, who might be paying 10,000 a year for nursery schools or not going to nursery school at all because they can't afford it. This gives us a place and you can't those children at a young age.
Good question. I have discovered costs. For the cost reflective of the modules with the bathrooms, and that's the information, obviously, right?
Yeah.
Yes.
Thank you. And you're right, I agree, just thinking also district level benefits of it for all children. Able to bring in children earlier to learning, maybe here. And hopefully, start to kind of level some of those early childhood experiences.
Maybe I just made a couple of other comments. But the first thing is we promised to notify the families of our decision. I think that sort of is some time pressure. So I think Dr. Nikosia was saying she really needs to know these things.
Well, it sounds like if everyone is, it's not a formal vote, but if they're, you know, I think, if to, you know, public comment as well, for us, if, we can, if we can move forward in good faith, because again, I have some on hold. If we could tell them it's okay to move forward with the two, two-classroom units and move forward with that, then we can approve it at the next board meeting and send them a letter of intent that we can move this forward, because there is a bit of a time pressure. Thank you, Mr. Woodward.
Yeah, maybe the other thing, just to emphasize, that the minimum lease on these is 24 months. So if we did, if we only did two classrooms this year, and we were committed to expanding for next year, and then we have to do it all over again, probably, you know, the leases will be out of sync. So then, I don't know, it's just something to keep in mind.
But I will get that, Brock's question, which is important too, to make sure that we have that question answered about the length of time that we can have these modulars outside. So I'll get, hopefully, I can get back tomorrow to Chris, who can even share it with the board.
So do you need sort of a consensus from the board tonight after your public comment?
Yes.
Okay, good.
Not a formal vote, but just consensus.
All right. Now, that, the parking area that's outside, is that used in the, I can't remember it all. Is that used in the morning or at the end of the school day for, it's like seven little students before they go in and out of the school building?
No, so they go in and out through the entrance on the side over here, the main entrance. We do use, so you can see the gate here, we do use it when there's snow and as additional for parking for the staff. So that would be available, I do know, for recess and before nap or early staff care. They, gym, they use that space for play and for gym, outdoor gym and things like that. So it just won't be available for those, for those things. But I mean, there's other places to play, so beautiful playgrounds for a new, students are loving. So, you know, we do have that space as well. So we just have to modify outdoor gym a little bit if Mr. Luxemburg wants to take the kids outside. We don't want to get open land around us and remake for outdoor recess and play space, but we can't confirm anything, yes.
And that the gates, both of the gates that, that play area would be reconfigured, because we would be repairing the door for access. So the, so the security would be expanded outward to the, to the gates, right?
Probably not. We can't get, that probably, I don't think we can get the security out there. So we would keep, the thing is, that's why I'm recommending the bathrooms in the trailers, because they, you need key access to get into the building here. The door is like in right here. So let me move to the four ones over here. So I think it's important that the students have the bathrooms inside, so that they can go as a class when they need to go in and out for visit, for art, for lunch, for, you know, music, home class meetings and things like that. They would go in and out as a class, which they do normally now. When, if you see them for recess, they go out as a whole class versus having to go in and out for bathroom regularly would just be problematic.
Okay, so.
So there, no, there's not going to be, the gate here is not going to be, there's not going to be a swipe card or anything here.
Oh, okay. So, so but the first graders would still have to leave, like, sort of, that self-conviction classroom to go to the library.
Correct, yeah. Yes.
Both gates have locked capacity.
Yeah, both gates have locked capacity. So this is, this would, like, their whole, this whole area is gated in and locked.
Oh.
Can you get out? I'm sorry, the locks are going to have to go around the playground. I mean, those, those gates are locked, but can you get out?
Well, they were here, right here, this gate, this gate doesn't, this gate is, you can open this gate.
I see.
But this gate, the big gate that's like, big, it's locked.
I see, I see, okay. So this is not, use up staff parking, normal staff parking?
It's just, it's no. It is no parking, correct. But you can see here, so off to the side, this is McNally's space. This is the strange, really, the danger scare, all, like, pick all the people where they park, right?
Because she's there first.
Yes, she is. So, so here and then over here is the other additional parking. So you can see this is like the, where the little, where the things are.
Okay, cool, all right.
The Google Earth image.
I got it. I'm sure how you park and park it, I guess.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Any comments for the board? I think of this information, it would involve a lot.
It's a lot of work in a short time. Well, I was gonna say, the finding facilities committee and myself are misconstraining now, experts on modular classrooms.
A lot nicer than the trailers we had in the 70s, you know.
Yeah, so that's what I wanted to do a presentation on, because I didn't want there to be this misconception when you, you know, some people will call them trailers. Again, we're continuing to call them modular classrooms. They're not trailers. They're, they're beautiful spaces. We actually have little teachers that are volunteering already and want to have their classes in there. They, they like it, there's something kind of fun and special about it. So, but that's what I wanted to show, so that there wasn't this misconception that was going around the community that we're putting kids in trailers. That's not, that's not the intent. But we do want to advocate to provide more students access to full-day pre-K, because remember, we're going to have to get two grade levels, three-year-olds and four-year-olds, all of them in in five years. So we have a, we have a long road ahead of us, but this is a great start with, if you'll have, consider putting two, two-modular, four classrooms in total outside Irving next year, the next two years. Thank you.
We are trying to move on to board microphone. So for given instructions.
Okay, can you come in? Okay. So the committee, February 7th, it was myself, Mr. Krager, Ms. McNally, DeNacola, Dr. Nikosia, and Ms. Rodriguez. The first item we discussed was the SCABW proposals. We are still waiting for information on the day of dialogue. Mr. Lester reported that they could possibly put this date and this event in the operational budget to fund it, but there is concern about being possibly over budget. The committee thinks the day of dialogue is worthwhile and would like to iron out the details of how it will be funded and organized. The second thing we touched upon was the high school graduation credit proposal. The committee discussed the potential service hour requirement. There's a consensus, we need to iron out when and where the service opportunities are and where they could be held. For example, in-school opportunities would help students have access to service hours without encroaching on other responsibilities students have outside of school hours. The committee discussed the concern about the compulsory nature of the requirement presented at the previous board meeting. We will also have to make sure that the service hours are done with fidelity. The committee discussed the concern about small class numbers mentioned at the previous board meeting. The process would be the same as the high school uses now. Running classes with small class sizes and offering independent study, only two or three students request the course. The committee agrees reducing the required credits would free up students to pursue interests in student-centered learning instead of mandates, reduce student stress, reengage students in learning, and allow students to pursue other educational opportunities such as the drone program. Our third item was the teacher-to-teacher student coaching, or, sorry, teacher coaching, instructional coaching for middle and high school. A facilitator from teacher to teacher will observe middle school and high school classes, deep reflect trends, and provide voluntary PD after school. There will also be full-day PD planned for September. The focus is on instructional practices and differentiation. Teachers can use those hours of voluntary PD towards the state requirement. High school mentoring program, which is going to be Title I funded, it is the Aspire High Nonprofit Youth Development Program that will focus on physical, mental, and emotional wellness. They discuss personal purpose, leadership, goal-setting, life skills, and academic success strategies. Students are assigned a mentor to meet one hour a week and over the course of six Saturdays during the year. There are college trips, college readiness programs, character development sessions with guest speakers, family engagement programs. Mentors are adults or students, or college students who already went through the program. And high school staff would work with the Aspire Coaching, the academic components. There are spots for approximately 40 students to mentor. The high school plans on inviting 100 Title I students and will coordinate recruitment efforts with Zone 6. We have no update on AP statistics, because we have not, or rather, Dr. Nikosia has not received any course approval paperwork. We also touched upon the middle school tier intervention for behaviors that's actually going to be revisited at the next meeting. There is going to be outside coaching coming in, which will be discussed later on in the agenda. And our policy was substance abuse. Dr. Nikosia met with Ms. Asimova about the thing in this policy. Everybody agrees that in those suspensions, we should tweak the policy to use the word programming, so to provide virtual or in-person substance abuse programs that families can access in a way that works best for them. that families can access in a way that works best for them. And on the agenda from our previous meeting, the only two new items for curriculum instruction are the approval of the HIPAA report, BS two-two-two-three-oh-seven-oh-eight-nine-oh-nine, and the approved, uh, approval of home instruction for two students. Any questions?
Any new questions for curriculum relative to?
I'll let the board have you with substance abuse treatment, or, I don't know, treatment exactly, substance abuse education.
Thank you, Ross. Uh, anybody else?
Yes, Anthony and Alex met on February sixteenth. I actually was not in attendance for this meeting, uh, but I have Jen, where we hear her notes here, and I'm going to recap, and please help me invite those ready where I'm here, Jen. Uh, but thank you for tolerating for me. Uh, first topic on discussion was related to the usage of the new, uh, HP app. Uh, just looking at this stats and data. Uh, there have been, uh, eight hundred and forty-one downloads as of, uh, February seventh, and approximately sixteen hundred students, two hundred and fifty to three hundred staff. So relatively low numbers, um, but engagement does seem higher than usual, uh, overall. Um, recent parent workshops held at Bardo have all had very high attendance. Uh, STEAM night, math night, literacy night, FCL night, uh, so that's encouraging to hear. Um, uh, see there's requests for more voice messages from Dr. Noculda, uh, to, I guess, have, where outreach to families, um, but asks if they can be sent before or after school, so parents are inadvertently alarmed by the, oh, yes, okay, by the AP, HP schools alert messages during the school day. Yes, we, parents all know that, basically. Uh, well, text messages and emails can be scheduled ahead of time, so, um, and that's part of our plan. App use is being discussed, um, by the leadership team as well. And I guess that's related to how to improve decision, make it more user-friendly as needed. Um, okay, so then they also, piggybacking off of curriculum instruction, as we often do, discuss, uh, the substance abuse prevention programs. It looks at actually a list of, uh, substance abuse, AKA smoking programs, uh, that are free. Some are in-person and some are virtual, uh, and I think the committee discussed the possibility of offering one program after the first offense and a different program after the second offense. So that, again, there would be more of a, um, educational intervention response as opposed to punitive. Uh, parental involvement, uh, could be encouraged at some point, uh, that, but this, uh, also could be a privacy issue if this happens, so we do have to be careful about, um, navigating those regulations. The programs should be self-directed as a part of ISS or guided by staff at the team center. So I have to hear, now we're looking at, moving in that direction. And there's a list here that I can see linked in the Anthony and Alex Committee notes, uh, were approved programs. Uh, again, curriculum already discussed, the, uh, high school graduation credit proposal, will policy change there? Uh, let's see, I don't think there's anything to add to that discussion from curriculum committee. It's like overlapping stuff there. Um, then the committee discussed, uh, recruitment and retention of staff of color. There are some improvement areas and permanent vacation programs that will start in March and April that, uh, Dr. Noculda and her team are looking forward to tapping into. Uh, and then, uh, preschools expanded by your program, a plan. The only thing I would add to that, which hasn't already been discussed tonight, is that committee discussed, um, the fact that there is, they would consider and be willing to have a kind of a tiered priority moving for, uh, preference to, uh, these, this new full-day preschool program. First priority, of course, would be for students, uh, who are eligible for free to use lunch while by siblings of students already at Irving. And all other redprints would be placed in a formal lottery. Uh, let's see, and I think that covers it. Let me just scroll down here. I know we talked about looking at our discipline data reports. Um, I don't see any notes here, so I'm not sure if there was any discussion on that, that may have been tabled for the next meeting. Um, and that is it. Thank you.
Any questions for, for the other excellence?
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Um, and finance facilities, Chris.
Okay, so we, we, uh, twice, we had once indoors on the seventh and one outdoors on, uh, what was it? It was a beautiful day, February twenty-third. We visited some of the possible sites with modular classrooms, and we met a local guy visiting his dog, so he's really the best I've ever seen in government. Uh, okay, so just to recap, uh, the state's mandated expansion of pre-K, uh, but they haven't offered to pay for the needed space. Dr. Nikosia recommended modular classrooms at Irving as a temporary solution. I think the committee agreed we want to be, uh, as aggressive as possible and expanding the program if we can do that at a reasonable cost to town. Uh, so the initial quote for a two-classroom building, uh, two K, around two K per month, plus a hundred K installation removal for twenty-four month lease, that's the minimum length of lease. Uh, the committee felt this was pretty reasonable, and so I think we all agree to recommend that. Then we got an updated quote. I, I, I wrote this actually before the latest information for the modules came in. So, uh, the, the updated quote was for the four hundred, uh, the four classroom building, which was a total cost of six hundred K for two-year lease, which is a lot more. So we're hoping to, um, go with the other option. Demand for modulars is high due to the fact that all the districts in New Jersey are in the same position. Uh, we also have the question whether we can find the teachers, the nurses, the castles, and so on, have a program. Uh, I've been told we do have enough teachers with pre-K accreditation, but not to teach pre-K, so that gives the district a lot of flexibility, so I'm hoping to be able to work out the staffing issues. Uh, there could be as many as two hundred children or more interested in the program. Uh, we've already mentioned how the priorities can go. Um, the state funding is not providing until August, so the start date would be October first. Also, the program only runs straight in the usual school year, so families will actually double their agents during the summer. Uh, so there are going to be a lot of property tax dollars spent on this, but there are also the benefits of families and the, the high impact on debt equity issues. So the committee supports as much as we can to bring the program to town quickly. Second item, we, we, uh, discussed the purchase and recommended the purchase of methane detectors. Uh, weren't, weren't reported from the safety committee that these don't be supported that. There are a lot of issues with students scared to go to the bathrooms because they don't know what's in the base smoke and everything. Um, we were contacted by the town on maybe going and partnering with them with using some of their NPP funds to purchase a new sign for Irving. So, uh, the principal is, is like, I think they're going to try and choose a location for that. We're recommending that we split the cost with the town's grant and the Irving PTO. Uh, and then we also discussed issues with the before and after K program. Uh, the districts having trouble finding administrators to run the program. We also discussed some liability issues. Uh, so the option of having an outside organization come in to administer the program. A lot of other districts do that, uh, is, is discussed. Uh, they have some ready flexibility that we don't. Uh, but the downside is then we would lose for a look at how the funding and admissions are structured. So, uh, the administration is probably going to back to us with a hell of a lease to have it out of the line. So we can discuss it more. Um, okay, so about, uh, the agenda items. I think the first few are the one, two, uh, two, three, four, and five are, are bill lists, uh, which are the, uh, in the, uh, intention. Um, six is the approval of the treasures report, the board secretary's report, and the board of, uh, education certifications, and the, uh, budget transfers. Uh, ten is the reimbursement report. Eleven is the approval of contractors, so, uh, aspire, uh, youth development mentoring services, uh, drones for the, the course, um, I think we discussed that last time. The, uh, professional development by Inspired, uh, tutoring services, Comeco Institute for Restoration Practice Programming, the tuition to attend the, uh, arts program in Middle Six County College, uh, the behavior analysis consult, consultation, uh, the nursing services, and the therapy and health services to be funded by, by year. And then, uh, twelve is, is the, uh, where the steward for some of the money that comes from the state to the, uh, Yucca High School for the laptops. And, uh, fifteen is the contract. And then to increase the, uh, long-term teacher rate, so we can attract long-term teachers. And fourteen is a security purchase for Montessori. Uh, again, I think that's just money that's coming through us. Fifteen is the other district placements. Sixteen is bed self-destruction. Uh, seventeen is a, uh, a salvage agreement of other private placement. Eighteen is a, our teaching grant application for the roof replacement at Irving School. Nineteen is the, uh, roof replacement at the high school. Twenty is the electrical service upgrade. Uh, twenty-one is the additional grants for China One. Good luck, Susan.
Are you good, Chris? Uh, Mark, what we have?
Yeah, I, I wondered if this would be the appropriate venue, the finance report. I have a motion, um, if we have a sense of the board can move forward to get the two double classrooms.
We should wait until the public speaks.
Oh, okay.
In case someone wants to talk. I'm writing now, it's, and it may change.
But, but the sense of the committee, I mean.
Yes, yes.
I just added, and then, not the public, uh, added, and then the public speaks.
Oh, 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 I see, I see. I thought we weren't voting on it, it's just the same.
Yeah, but, but maybe let, let the public be aware that comment on the proposal to lease modulars is, um, is, is being discussed and, uh, the infallible.
Hey, George, you can do it after that, just, thanks. Okay, you can tell it to write up any, uh.
We don't need a motion?
We don't need a motion?
We're not, no, I mean, do, do we need to go to?
Okay. Okay, so you just want to know that the board is.
Just consensus.
Okay.
So we should be convened, so to speak, after the public talks.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It could be a consensus.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Fair.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions on finance facilities?
Well, I just wanted to comment that I noticed, uh, this grant thing will bring some commission for holiday for restoring practice support. So I, and we should see that, thank you so much for bringing our resource to us. And the IPA grant.
You guys, great.
Yeah, exciting to see that also.
Yeah.
So, we'll help that.
Yeah, it's part of the work that we're doing collectively also with our, um, MTSS approach, the multiple sys, multiple tier systems of, of approach, because we're noticing that our intervention and referral services is an area that we need some support, um, in our five and four process, so we're looking at it all holistically. So typically, in that process, students are referred for academic purposes for intervention and referral services, but we also have to consider behavioral issues as well. So we're kind of wrapping it all together as a way to support students collectively in multiple different areas. So we're packaging the, you know, the, the, the work together, um, which is why the IPA grant is funding it. So it's, yeah, so it's a consulting work to evaluate the program. So we're looking at evaluating a lot of our programs and making recommendations, and then providing professional development and training to support, uh, multiple programs.
You're welcome.
Anything else on finance, for finance? And we're going to move on to first now, and?
Okay, here we go, let's see. Um, I believe I, uh, discussed our committee meeting last week, so we've read the agenda. Uh, as usual, anything in bold font is something we did not discuss last time. Is that right? We're not, okay, right, I'm sorry, I just, uh, somebody had a, a revoting moment. Sorry. So, yes, for today. All right, so, uh, anything not in bold, we've already discussed it. Obviously, questions are welcome, but I won't go over anything. Um, so new items include number two and number three, which are some explanatory, uh, number five as well. Number six, I wanted to just, um, ask the Dr. Nikosia question, but actually, that's okay, you shouldn't ask earlier. This is quite a number of reservations.
So this is actually part of a cleanup? So these are actually people that don't necessarily work for the program anymore, or even for the school district? Uh, and what, so it was actually part of the program with, with this staff were approving in a time sheet in our online system. And what we found when we were kind of cleaning up our online system was that they, they still had time sheets attached to them. We never actually formally removed them from the program, so this is just a formal formality to remove them from the program. Just like, we have one team of staff that are still working our aftercare program, and beforecare program. This is not those current people. This is just a cleanup because these people left and we never actually formally moved them from the program.
That's good to know, I was a little scared.
Just a matter of knowledge.
Right, all right. Uh, number nine and number ten are new, and also some explanatory. Number eleven is a new school psychologist. What, what, is this, uh, for the district as a whole? Dr. Nikosia, uh, Dr., that's sorry, number eleven, Dr. Julia Charbonne. So, school psychologists are measures for doctors that work.
So, yeah, this is for the CCEIS, uh, program that we have for month because we have a disproportionality reported from the state that we were overclassifying white male students for, um, emotional regulation impairment classification.
So this is the, the position that somebody left, uh, in the last meeting. Okay, so we are fulfilling.
Fulfilling.
Okay, yes. Okay, and is, is, uh, Dr. Ernus Charbonne already in the district?
No, she will start, uh, tomorrow.
Okay, I didn't know she was in it.
No, no, she's, uh, no.
Okay. We have an intern social worker for educational services, Mr. Marcus, welcome, Mr. Marcus. Um, moving on to the next new item. Oh, and I have some readings too, so be first. Okay, number twenty-one is not a new item, a couple of staff apparent math night, or math apparent night, I think they covered it. Uh, on number twenty-one, there is a read-in. Um, let's see. I believe we are, Erica, uh, so someone's last name, uh, I believe is incorrect here, if I'm reading this correctly. Uh, Row two is Erica Severs, uh, for doing childcare at Bardo. It's actually Erica Opitz, O-P-I-T-Z. There's that change, so I'll be moving this as amended. Uh, let's see, there's other new items, twenty-four through, through possibly the end, we'll see. Um, there's another read-in on the, they're all self-explanatory, it's tied in, some people didn't do their work. Uh, um, for twenty-six, there's also a read-in, let's see. Let me see what this has got this. Again, I don't have plenty of time for the meeting, so I just, I just read it. So I'm just trying to figure out what's changed. See, this is about the Title I, Birmingham STEAM program staff, two times a week in five, two-week sessions. Section one, briefly, I'm sorry, I just still looking, oh, I'm sorry, and, I didn't see that. I apologize, guys. What we're going to do in number twenty-six is add two employees. I'm just reading immediately correctly, uh, as follows. Uh, a new employee, Victor Zara, for fourteen thousand dollars an hour, not to exceed twenty-one hours, includes a one-hour meeting, and the fund, the gap code is twenty, two-thirty-one, one-hundred, one-one-zero, zero-seven-zero, zero-one, one-one. Uh, that's new employees, it was Agaros, forty-eight thousand hour, substitute for the program. And that is the same gap code that I just read. All right. Moving on. Salary adjustments, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, thirty. Okay, after twenty-one, there is another, uh, read-in. Number thirty-two, approval nurse for field trip high school. I've moved at the Board of Education, accept the recommendation, superintendent approve. Uh, I've never known that announcement first name, is it Janie or Yana? Janie, I don't know, I apologize. Janie laser, to attend the high school decker check, STEAM competition in Atlantic City from twelve PM on February twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-three, three PM on March first, twenty-twenty-three, the rate is sixty-three, ninety-eight per hour, being paid outside of the regular daily hours for a total of fifty-four hours, equaling three thousand four hundred ninety-four dollars and ninety-two cents. Gap code eleven, zero, zero, two-one-three, one-hundred, zero-five-zero, eleven-five. Um, and that is it for personnel. Yeah, I'm sorry, redo everything, I think we posted it self-explanatory, it's, it's, uh, delineated there. And I can't tell you the names of anybody who got an exercise in it. There are a couple of other comments, I'm sorry, some of the, um, uh, returning leaves or disability leaves and so on.
Any questions, personnel? Okay, uh, seeing on, there is the policy, what's new, did I mean? And all the policies that are on the agenda were, uh, presented, sorry, I don't know, last one. So we're, last time. So we are good to find new public comment, that's, that's, and, so, um, the highest part for verification, welcome to public participation, and has reserved this time for more comments. More policies, oh-one-six-four, and oh-one-six-seven, established and regulated by the public, the public leaders. This part of public. This part of public comment, it's, it's very public comment, our meeting is three minutes for a speaker. Um, we have some speakers in the room, so they'll go first, then we'll move to online, and, uh, they'll raise your hand, make your case, make your name and your address, and, um, we'll give you a good time to let you know when your thirty seconds to hold your energy of your time. Um, so thank you, uh, is it your senator, you go first?
Can I, can I just, like, we, we're gonna have the unlimited speaking agenda. Okay, just a people, we're not familiar with our product.
Right, right. And it was like, we have a special public comment yet?
John Bogdan, two oh six, Florida grad. Congratulations on having systematically installed social and emotional learning in Highland Park schools. This required more skill, ambition, and humorless than merely attempting to compel every high school student to take the race, gender, and ethnicity class and to recommend, based on a biased, unscientific, preordained survey produced by the class, mandatory DEI training for all school personnel. Dr. Taylor indeed read the cards right and left town before the train arrived. Social emotional learning is political indoctrination posing as education. The object is development of what Paulo Freire called conscientization for critical consciousness, which is channeled into activism aimed at criticizing and dismantling so-called power structures or systems of oppression. Teachers are trained by political theorists, schools of education, and by DEI mills to act as social workers and psychologists. Then, in this unlicensed capacity, they survey students. The surveys are processes of data mining to extract so-called generative themes from students by introducing provocative social and emotional topics such as race, gender, and ethnicity. Not coincidentally, strategic plan oh-three presented at the last meeting includes two surveys to measure the resilience of children ages five to nine and ten to eighteen. It is not the business of public schools to conduct psychological tests of children's resilience, especially when, under SEL, the emotional concerns of so-called learners are used to facilitate so-called dialogue and reflection with so-called educators leading to critical consciousness. Politically motivated, socially and emotionally charged incursions into the minds and emotional states of children usurp parental rights and responsibilities for illegitimate political ends. This is what appears to have been done two years ago with the survey conducted by the race, gender, and ethnicity class. Always the goal is to extend the ever-grown tentacles of DEI deeper and deeper into every aspect of the school system at the expense of teaching, reading, writing, math, and science, which become facilitators of critical consciousness rather than things to be learned in themselves. This is how a lesson in English is transformed into a lesson about English as a racist language. This is how parents lose authority to have a say in the sexual education of their children. So congratulations on converting the whole Highland Park system into a gargantuan race, gender, and ethnicity class.
My next speaker?
Hi, I'm Elizabeth Anio, two oh eight, North Third. Uh, before I officially start, I just want to say why I'm counting, and it's just about the start, uh, school start times, and if anyone is here who has posted the school start times, um, not necessarily that the child can use their hand, and if you're on Zoom, if you could please write down that that's where you personally get counted. Um, so the word times that's comprised of sleep, safety, movement, and health of the young children is the best solution that they can come up with in the name of equity for high school students, and I say that's not. While I understand there are many factors that went into this decision, I know that many other factors have intentionally been left out. You're more concerned with finishing a project than you are with getting right, right, being equity for all students. With the current time of eight forty, the high school already meets the suggested later start time of eight thirty. The eight period seems to be the big problem, since, and since that's the case, it needs to be figured out within the high school system. It's been explained that it is created to allow flexibility for high school students to learn about them, something within that system needs to give, be it later end times, integrating the classes within the school day, et cetera. Surely, there's a more holistic way of reoperating this issue without creating problems for students to govern schools. At the last meeting, the board discussed lower-than-the-front requirements so students can be earlier to do community service or go to work. Everyone was on, was on board for this, surely you can be flexible in that respect, you can find a way to change the high school time start, start time that satisfies the want of students. Classability is a privilege and should not come at the expense of others. Let's discuss traffic safety. From mid-February to end of January, the sun is beginning to rise until seven twenty, which is the timeline which we often leave to force school to make it as a nick of time. This doesn't take into account other kids who look harder than we do. When the sun rises, doesn't just pop up because, and become sunny out, it gradually rises with the color light changing, AKA twilight, which means that, um, which means that they'll be walking a good portion of the year in the dark or during twilight, which, which will increase the likely hook getting hit by a car, since driver's eyes are adjusting to the change of light hindering their ability to see small children or any pedestrians. At a recent meeting with the board, someone asked if there are so many parents who care, or are there? I can answer that simply, there are one, either unworthy of the situation, or that they have the right to voice their opposition. They have children to put to bed at this hour or are working. Three, they cannot physically be here, but are on Zoom and are uncomfortable speaking, so we are counting towards, counted towards the parents who organized this decision. And four, they don't feel like the board will listen to them, this is a big one. After my experiences trying to communicate with the board, I've noticed that despite multiple emails, live discussions against this new change, the board has absolutely no intention of listening to or considering the struggles of Bartle and growing families and students. This is a bad book for the entire board, the dismissiveness is definite. Despite the overwhelming pushback against this time change, you will all choose it to ignore concerns that neglect the health of our younger students and turn away from the fact that less sleep, hurried mornings, and walking in the dark will affect your education. You're choosing to ignore the safety concerns, you're choosing to ignore the hardships this decision puts on families with multiple children, you're choosing to ignore the droughts and production of sleep that Bartle, that, that children from moving from Bartle to Bartle experience. What would it take for board to consider the difficulties that this new hurry decision poses on families of younger children? Why don't, why do you continue to disregard these revelations that have been brought to your attention? Now, if you know better, you can do better, yet the board knows better and refuses to do better. If you do not have a true equitable solution for all Highland Park students, then I implore you to keep the schedule as is and use this next year as another opportunity to find a true equitable solution for all, while including, you know, it's real schools that people in the dark, thank you.
Thank you. Just, just your name, my name, Fiona Stanyo.
Hi, I'm Fiona Stanyo, and I am a student at Bartle, and I am opposed to this time change because I already know that it's something again, and it's still hard to get to school by eight AM, which, when this new time change, it will be even harder for me and other kids in my school to get, uh, get to school on time. If I get to school with less sleep, I will fall asleep in class and miss very important lessons. That will mess up, um, mess with my grades and make me struggle in school. And if I am late, that will also make me miss important information in my morning class. Also, it will be very dark outside when we walk to school, and it's very hard to see. As a student who will be affected by this change, I'm asking you to please not go, uh, not make us go to school when you already are.
Thank you very much.
Should we move the flag? Well, perhaps, it's a little bit, people keep running into it accidentally, it's making our hearts, well, thank you, sir. Ah, that's really.
Good evening, everybody can hear me?
Yes, yes.
All right. Um, Joseph Stanyo, uh, two oh eight, North Third, I'll also hear about the time change. Uh, the first time we were notified of any changes regarding start times at Bartle and Irving was last month, and many spoke of red white. The only discussion we were aware of regarding start times was for high school students and later start times only. It is currently over six months until the next school year begins. I understand contract obligations and transportation constraints have already been approved, conveniently enough for the board, but there is still time. As for the notification, your proposed start times seem to indicate it is still in discussion, yet our requests to be heard and part of the, excuse me, the discussion continue falling on deaf ears, and response has been curt and dismissive. You have spoken about mental health, does mental health not matter if a child is born in sixth grade? What about behavior issues that, that over tire, tire children, demonstrate? How do you handle children falling asleep in class because they are working against their circadian rhythm? While there have been studies that state middle school, high school aged children do better with later start times, there are also many studies that from younger children also do better with later start times. Why choose to regard studies at older students, uh, regard studies about older students while actively choosing to ignore the science about younger children? Let's also not forget that children at Bartle are not only young children, a good amount of them adolescents also fit the same criteria included in the studies that are being used to make the case for the later start times for older children. You've spoken about accommodations for those who need it. Will that mean that those who qualify for five oh four and P will be allowed to come in late without consequence? What about the last time they will miss because of that? What about their sibling who works with them? Will, will they also get special permission to be late, or will they be penalized because they don't qualify for special accommodations? Let's not forget about the families who have multiple children, if you haven't noticed tonight. Uh, with the new suggested start time, we need Irving students who also have to leave the house extra early so that their Bartle siblings can also maybe in time for seven forty-five AM, then wait outside in cold until, uh, until our basement opens. The community as a whole has not been part of the discussion. We were told this was due not to wanting pushback from the community it brought into the discussion. Seems very selective to me. And you, uh, and now, here we are, but we're tired, we're, but we're being told it's too late. If you truly want to make changes that benefit the entire community, you must include the entire community throughout the process. Now that we've had to essentially force our way into this conversation, you will now have to, to endure that much-feared pushback now from a community that feels deceived. We're not going anywhere until you start to listen and include us in the conversation. Resent this time-changing decision and commit to Bartle and Irving not starting before eight AM.
Thank you. Do you, do you speak? Well, that, I do support people. Thank you. Um, we're gonna move to our online, um, speakers. I was jotting down as I notice cans in no particular order, and I don't necessarily see person last page, so Espinoza, I saw your hand first, if you want to speak first, I'm sorry, I'll give you a hand.
Hi, yes, my name is Flora Espinoz de Wollak. Um, I am also here to speak against the, uh, new start times for Bartle and Irving. Um, we, uh, sorry, that, I can't figure out glasses. Oh, sorry, it's one forty-eight Duplos Lane in Highland Park. Um, we live in the triangle section of Highland Park, specifically on Duplos Lane. And according to Google Maps, it's over one point one miles away from Bartle School. It takes me and my husband twenty-five minutes to walk there, and with my son, it takes forty minutes for him to walk there. So if the new, uh, start times for Bartle School, we would have to leave our house before seven or five in the morning to get there on time. That seems unfair and unhealthy for a seven-year-old. Um, we do not have other power, so walking is our only option, and we're not eligible for blessing. Um, we are also in favor of having no, um, Highland Park schools start before eight AM for the safety of everyone, also in the triangle section, that many streets do not have sidewalks. So it is not only going to be dark in winter, when we have to leave our house at seven AM, there are no sidewalks for students to walk on. Um, so we also request that the board, uh, reassess this policy on taking into account that many students do not live near Bartle, and it takes a good half an hour or more to walk to school with no sidewalks on many streets. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Elizabeth?
Um, hi, yeah, um, sorry, that's my son. Um, Elizabeth Wildremer, I have a son at Bartle, um, sixteen-year-old semi-capable. Um, wanted to say just two quick things, wanted to add my voice to the people who oppose the new proposed start times for Irving and Bartle. Um, Bartle is already too early, um, for many families, um, including my own, and I maybe naively thought when the district was talking about later start times that they would actually reconsider the Bartle start time. Um, but Bartle and Irving families were never part of this discussion, um, and so that was why you are hearing from us now and asking, you know, the Board of Education members who are elected to, you know, represent families to really speak up and speak out about this, not, you know, simply represent what the administration proposes. Um, the second thing, really quickly, is for the first time I've heard tonight, that the modular classrooms for expanding pre-K would take up a significant portion of the Irving playground, which is obviously used for recess and used for the after-school program and used for outdoor gym. I was really surprised and disappointed to not hear one Board of Education member push back on this. There is parking available. Um, I would personally rather see us use parking spaces for a modular classroom rather than, um, a playground. Um, obviously, our priority should be to preserve the playground, not to preserve, um, parking spaces. So it is my hope that this proposal is actually shared with Irving families, um, that there is a serious consideration of really restricting kids' access to that playground, um, next year, and I would hope that Irving families would be informed of this, and that there, that there is no movement on this proposal, um, until the community is involved, and that there's serious consideration of looking into using parking spaces rather than using a children's playground. Thanks.
Thank you. Sarah?
Yeah, hi, can you hear me? My husband's here as well. He's also equally as opposed to the early start time as I am, uh, but I'll be the voice here, so, um, I know you all know, you know, our opposition, but want to add to the voices. Um, if people listen. Oh, three Grand Avenue, I live here. Um, so we all know with biological leads that if not met, um, it can affect the behavior, attention, memory development, list goes on, for all, um, uh, children that we're talking about, um, through, you know, the youngest to our oldest. Um, and you know that younger children require more sleep than teenagers, truncating that sleep has no effects, both immediately evident and delayed, know this, I've talked to literature. The framing on this topic has always been around later, so, no indication any child would have to experience earlier start times in the name of equity. So just to kind of recount a little bit for those who haven't been tracking, um, September header on the topic was later start times. The October newsletter, uh, subheader was later start times. November was later start times. And if I were to quiz you all, what do you think December would be? Later start times. So one communication that addressed earlier start times, um, went out a couple, a little bit after we demanded, um, there'd be more clear communication. The, the title of that email was weekly message from superintendent. Now, what do you think the first communication on preschool expansion was? It was clearly titled preschool expansion letter from superintendent. So we really appreciate that transparency and effect, and expect, expect, um, for all communications, especially when we're demanding it, it's clearly sensitive to the community. Um, so we see a difference in treatment here, and the superintendent did not use the standard policy change process we've discussed. They provided no opportunity for families that many, you know, are really just kind of up in arms about, which I think is very legitimate. And so a group of us, really engaged folks who actually happen to be wanting to hear about this and really learn about it, we asked that district provide at least two weeks in advance notice, follow the process of procedure, so families could be notified about it, we asked that this be communicated, and they're similar, um, to other communications, we asked to put on the website, um, that they said no to all of these above requests. So, you know, it just really, simply, an educated and equitable decision on changing of school times cannot be made without a holistic evaluation of the effects this has on our children across the span. And this analysis was not completed, um, and cheating on the new high school students. We're creating inequities with unknown impacts for hundreds of children. And I want to note this will be especially salient for those, um, being bused to Bartle. Now, extremely early with the earliest start time on the entire school district of seven forty-five, we are certainly in that line of years, so that was a goal, we've achieved it. Um, and this is a population that we have hypersensitivity to protect it. So ultimately, we're doing this merit with our children, and that's, um, yeah, it's just not one we think we're willing, um, and many are willing to, uh, to take. So, you know, I want to just call here, the process just can't stand, and even if you're not affected by the changes or, or like the changes, what we're seeing is a major loss in our representation. And the board members are elected officials meant to represent community voices, we are asking you actually directly, please help. We are asking you actually directly, please help us and in good faith publicly stand um by this decision. Is that something you can stand by? You all really want to um hold your cap on this process. And what I would say to um yeah, well, all I will say is there are some board members that I know, um you know, we're here, we want to empower you and please do listen to us and we we look forward to partnering with those who um you know, will will take the logic and the science into account.
Thank you. Um Andrea?
Hi, um Andrew Alexander, one sixteen North Third Avenue. I am also here tonight to express my concern about the um earlier school start times and support the other parents who are here and also ask, I know we're being told that this is a done deal and there's no room for reconsideration, but um I'm still asking for reconsideration. Um you know, a parent of a high school middle school student shared the survey that she received or the note for the survey she received last May. Um and it's, you know, says, you know, Highland Park High School later start time survey. And it also mentions your participation. It's addressed to the parents of middle and high school students. It says your participation in this survey is critical. So we have input from all of our stakeholders, including students, staff and parents in our decision. So I want to know why the Bartle and Irving parents were left out. I want to know why the middle school and high school families input is considered more valuable than our input. Um I I feel like this has been an incredibly unfair process and it's basically echoing everything that everybody else has said. We were never part of the conversation and our children are also affected. It is not equitable equitable to have one group of students in the school be allowed to sleep later while making another group of students in the school be forced to get up earlier. And you know, I'm sure you've heard endless stories at this point about all the kids who struggle in the morning. I also think it's interesting that I heard there was a mention tonight about the possibility of moving first grade over to Bartle in order to make room for preschool program. And it's just ironic to me because my first grader thinks that Irving starts too early at eight thirty and he struggles to get there and we're late again this morning. And I have to say, it's so ironic because the day that um email finally went out from the superintendent after this was approved, saying that there were going to be earlier start times and Irving and Bartle was the morning my daughter was running late and my husband said that Bartle starts too early and I said, I know it does, but they keep mentioning later start times because I thought that was district wide. So um until the bus contract is signed, it is not to reconsider this. I hope that you'll hear our voices. I hope you will decide that that the input of Irving and Bartle parents is just as valuable as input of middle and high school parents. And I hope you will reconsider this and put this off until you can find a more equitable solution that doesn't negatively impact one group of students in order to allow another group of students to sleep later. So thank you.
Thank you. Uh we can proceed then. We're gonna come back to a couple more items that are.
Hello. My name is Gina. I'm at one one five North Fourth. I'm not gonna try to spell. Oh, my name is Gina. I'm at one one five North Fourth. Yes, Gina. Kazinsky, uh Jiven Kazinsky, I'm one one five North Fourth. Uh yes, um I'm not gonna get into the whole, you know, clearly the community does feel welcome to sleep as you guys know, you're gonna hear about it tons more time to know about the whole, oh, we thought it was just gonna be a later start time that they're mentioning that it was earlier. And no, I don't mean to sell anybody on that. And also to, you know, the sleeping patterns of children, you know, how it will negatively affect them. I don't mean to speak on that. You're gonna hear from several other parents. But the one thing that I kept hearing was, especially a lot from Facebook, you know, people offering their opinions, it's only twenty minutes earlier or it's only fifteen minutes earlier. And that's really not the case. Um I'm a community mom. Um I don't know if everybody else here has to drive during rush hour. So sure, for Irving, that's where my um oldest daughter is, it will only be a twenty minute earlier start time. But reality is it's gonna be at least a half hour. Um if you guys are all on the road on Route twenty seven, that traffic light, I swear, it's only two seconds. Um that is not a long traffic light at all. So we are gonna have to leave the house probably at at least a half hour earlier um just to take into account all of the increased traffic that we all know is on the road at that time. And um I just want to know, um you know, is there going to be possibly another vote on this? And if uh what what can we do to, you know, make have more of a discussion regarding this? That'll be it. Thank you.
Coming back to online and Nadyon. We're putting my.
Yes, my hi, my name is Nadyon Sabia. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, it's Ariyam. I think I'm home. Yes, I'm on to South Second Avenue. I am ready to submit this formal complaint later behalf of a lot of members, including myself and my husband. I'm here to just reiterate again, since I have only three minute time limit, I'm just gonna, you know, summarize the uh moment that I already submitted. So this call response serves as a formal objection to the proposed notification of the start time at Bartle and the Irving elementary schools. We have been informed that Bartle and Irving start time will be changed to seven forty five AM and then eight ten AM respectively, less than September of two thousand twenty three. On February sixth, two thousand twenty three, Board of Education meeting that this change was needed to accommodate high school students who require more sleep and we have received a zero warning or zero opportunity for discussion prior to that announcement. Typically, changes are introduced at one meeting and then voted on the next meeting to allow primary public for response and a comment. This was not the case and frankly, it's not acceptable as the way of changing any policy or a significant school protocol. For this reason, we're proposing that the new start time are not be the final decision and on comments are considered fully fit for finalizing the new terms with the both the union and boxing contract. We must do what is the really best for our children and introduce it to the uh school union and look at passing, not the the other way around. During the previous Board of Education meeting, the district was hesitant that the equity in the house requires the that this change to be made. But you did not consider the inequity of the family of the younger children who do not have the privilege to arrange their work schedule to arrive in much earlier than their working hours. These families cannot simply work from home, have a flexible schedule to pick up their children even earlier than they have been. During this meeting, you were also indicated you start to survey the parents of the middle school and high school student, inquiring whether they were in a later start time. Yet you admit that you never surveyed the elementary school's parents on this same issue. This means that you did not account hardship that it would have placed on the families of the children attending Irving and Bartle and did not consider the full effect on these changes or the new in its full equity plans. This proposed the change, this proposed change will not have will have a substantial impact on over five hundred elementary school students in Highland Park. The eight eight o'clock start time is already too early for children and younger ch- young children actually need a longer time to get ready for their uh day. And Bart- Bartle more ending the Bartle school at two fifteen is ridiculously early and many families do not have ability to end their dates this early. It's even more difficult for children who go to after school program until almost dinner time whose dating will be partially wrong. This proposed notification will result in a must must not happen. Please do whatever it takes to at the very minimum give all school time at eight AM or keep the Bartle holiday as close to their previous time as possible. The Bartle and all these students have their parents' values to preserve these considerations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mark?
Give me a second as I get my camera visible. Here we go. Good evening. My name is Mark Hitchcock. I live on twenty nine North Sixth. Um there have been some incredibly well spoken people who have been talking about uh the proposed start times. Um and so I'd like to just chime in to say that I, like many other parents, also oppose that. Um and there have been a lot of incredible reasons provided. I mean, the communication was lackluster. Um unfortunately, the school district has had a history of that. So you can hear a lot of that anger from parents that are feeling like that yet again. There's a lack of communication on something that's so significant. There's obviously a clear issue with the inequity of making an alteration for high school students and not considering that, um even though we've all heard repeatedly that we were gonna start at a later time and this actually would infer incur an earlier start time for a significant portion of the student population. I think it's particularly rich that um this entire change is pretty much predicated by the need to deal with the busing situation, which represents a very small minority of students. So we're actually affecting a much larger percentage of the population, especially commuting parents and uh parents with multiple children uh from different school districts. So I think that um while, you know, uh the intentions may have been noble and good, I think the execution here may actually have caused more damage than good in the head. So um I certainly think that uh reconsideration is is in order. And I also think that the one thing about contract, I'm not a contract lawyer, but I do know that if a contract hasn't been signed, sealed and delivered, you can always renegotiate. Uh you don't have to sign it. You can negotiate it. And if you have a constituency that is clearly upset about it, then you go back to the negotiating table and try again. So I suggest that you guys do that because you're gonna clearly get a lot more um parents upset about this. Uh I can just speak for the fact that a number of my friends and fellow parents uh have been sort of sidelined, swiped by this and rather surprised by it. So there's quite a lot of upset feelings out there. I think you're getting a small tip of the iceberg on that. Uh so I wish you well and good luck in your decision making. But I do encourage you to uh make a decision to reconsider and just go back to the drawing table and it comes to renegotiate. Thanks.
Thank you. Karen?
Hi, yes, good evening. My name is Karen Freeman, seventy thousand Main Street, Highland Park. I also oppose um having school earlier, um as all the other parents have said. But I do have a few questions and I don't know if you can answer them right away. But I I would appreciate if somebody does get back to me with respect to this. I'm just wondering when the superintendent proposed these changes for an earlier time, um if these changes weren't proposed in any of the meeting agendas? And which meeting agenda, if that can be uploaded online? So we as parents can look at that information um and see if we missed something because I don't believe the parents were given any notification that this was happening with respect to the Bartle and the Irving students. And if I'm wrong, then if you could just please upload upload this information online. Um also, I'm wondering if there was um public comment taken before the board actually voted on this. Um and I'm just wondering, I would like to see which which board members voted which way and if there were any questions asked, if anybody challenged any of um you know, the the superintendent requesting that the start times be earlier. Um then and that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Um. Um let's hear, this will be our last speaker. Okay, let's see if other person.
Hi, I'm sorry. Um can you feel well?
Uh you're reading up a little bit?
Can you feel me?
Okay.
Now, can you uh, well, my name is Christopher Espinoza and I'm living one forty two plus lane as well. And just like everybody else, I think the conversation on Bartle starting time should have been happened to have happened.
Okay, what made your heart closest to your door? Speak a little bit to our women's.
Uh sorry.
Your name and address.
Just my name is Christopher Espinoza. And I live in one forty eight Dupless Lane, Christopher, C R I S T O B A L.
Thank you.
Uh please, and just like everybody else with the uh starting time at seven forty five, that's just too early. Um it was not been asked about it. But uh my main question though is about uh the placement of the modular classrooms in Irving. Uh I think more data needs to be collected before making the decision. Uh we are, it will be effectively reducing the recreational space in fifty percent, around fifty percent and increasing the student population significantly. And this could be a significant impact for for kids who are in intervention and other programs. So I think really some qualitative analysis needs to be done in terms of deciding where those stuff should be placed. Um the unit committee should be involved in this conversation uh naturally. But we don't want is to fund this program, which we all agree, by sacrificing the quality of the service. Then we miss the proof transformation. Uh so please save uh more data before smaller classrooms especially be tied on the educational experience for kids in Irving. If you have more population and you reduce the size significantly over fifty percent for recreational areas. Uh I agree with uh Bill Greenberg that this should not be decided today. That we need to have uh. Today, committee during before that's for us and should be installed.
Okay. Thank you.
So I I I just like we should uh that they should not be about on these modular classrooms now because more discussions should happen with the community to go to to more the pay for the energy on the education in part. Recent number of my students are in school. Is that, sorry, my my language is not the best.
Yeah, you're breaking up, you're broken.
But I'm not.
I think we got just what you're trying to say.
Just. So. Um even because there will be less for kids who have more students, less space. So for for you, that's another point.
Thank you.
I got that.
Okay, um we need to go on to do board business. Um so there will be additional public comment as soon as we've concluded our voting. We're gonna try to put the laptop pretty bad out there. We have people who need to travel home. So let's, we're gonna move along and go to our board action items. Uh but it will be one more public talk that we have. So per your instruction, you want to move your uh why else unless you want to move your items?
Yes, I'd like to move items one, two, four.
Second.
Ms. Cassalden?
Yes.
Ms. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Galloway?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Ms. Prus?
Yes.
Mr. Rizalovich?
Yes.
Ms. Borges?
Yes.
Mr. Woodward?
Yes.
Okay, and finance facilities, move your items.
I guess we're gonna move uh. One, we go. Uh twenty one and are we adding something about the census of the board or not? So are we gonna have any more discussion about that question? It does, I know it does need to be a vote, but so we do need to uh move move forward some census of the board. Um you know, I guess you're moving, yeah, just can I can I comment on some of the public comment that we received?
Right now, we're doing, right now, we're doing public.
I was gonna do that during group business or whole business.
Yeah.
Yeah, should we, should we bring it up and do business then? Okay, okay. So one, one through one, not through twenty one.
Okay, we do one, twenty one from uh.
Second.
Chris? Yes, you will say this again. Ms. Cassalden?
Yes.
Ms. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Galloway?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Ms. Prus?
Yes.
Mr. Rizalovich?
Yes.
Ms. Borges?
Yes.
Mr. Woodward?
Yes.
And personnel, move your items.
Yes, thanks. I'd like to move items one through new thirty two, not written on the agenda, uh as amended.
Second?
Second. Sorry.
I don't know. Sorry. Okay, we got second. Okay, Ms. Cassalden?
Yes.
Ms. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Galloway?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Ms. Prus?
Yes.
Mr. Rizalovich?
Yes.
Ms. Borges?
Yes.
Mr. Woodward?
Yes.
Okay, and policies, that's me. I move um the policy regulations for second reading and eight through H. Second. Ms. Cassalden?
Yes.
Ms. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Galloway?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Ms. Prus?
Yes.
Mr. Rizalovich?
Yes.
Ms. Borges?
Yes.
Mr. Woodward?
Yes.
Okay, next on the agenda is board liaison reports. I know that Jan has something for board health. Um do you want to share their handout? I don't know if anybody else can like uh report to them. The rules.
Um okay, so the we met on February ninth, so a few weeks back. And the first item that I found for discussion was the elope defenders. Board felt strongly supports moving forward with that purchase. Um I guess that's been brought up for all of us now. They would like to know that. Um update on the content distribution. We have found out, I think I mentioned this at the last meeting, we found out that the high school did have extra. we found out that the high school did have extra cases and condoms available to distribute. But there was a question about how they're given out. It was brought up that they were put in a basket and available in the nurse's office. But the board health was asking, do all students really feel comfortable getting them there? We also staff recorded that generally they are, the students do come in, they don't seem to be shy about it. But again, they were questioning, is this only for more recent students? How do you really know? They recommend moving it to the bathrooms. I know this has been discussed at the hands, but I don't have details of any types of, you know, machines or distribution that we need to purchase for that. I don't think we could put it asking them there most, but that's, that's the recommendation. Or, and or distributing them at the teen center. And I guess if we could check with Ms. Sasa about doing it there instead. And then trying to figure out a way, if, if either of those things happen, trying to figure out a way, we can ensure access to those. Um, school start times, the board health said the new schedule is a massive improvement, especially for high school kids. One of the student days, I was reported that some of the high school students have jobs that start at three P M. So they're a little concerned that they'll have to push back their, their shift start time. So I know there were some questions about, you know, can we end the schools even later? So that when you roll back, the earlier schools can start later. But I guess that could potentially be an issue for some of the high school kids and their jobs. Just other members of the board health, when people attended seventh, eighth, and sixth grade, are very happy about the change. One member has a child in first grade who, that, that move from Irving to Bartle is one of the biggest, so they're being gone from eight thirty to seven forty-five. This particular person was thrilled about the change. They said, you know, their child spends some time in the morning watching TV because they're up anyway. So just one, one other thing about that. And then there was some information from student reps. They sent a resorted practice survey, I don't recall which school this was, middle school or high school? High school? High school. But that most students didn't know what resorted practice was. And so they were actually requesting some instruction on that for the kids, for students. Other surveys went out, asking if students want midterms. Also asking if they want S A T, A C T prep courses at the schools. I don't give the results from those surveys until that gets. Students are also requesting that an all gender bathroom be placed near the gym. There's currently a small bathroom, but it's been used so frequently for bathing, it's been closed for a while, so they don't have access to the smaller bathroom. They also mentioned that health class doesn't really include enough about nutrition. And they're asking if that could be considered to be added to the curriculum so that, you know, it's, it's sure that it's covered. And also that there's some activities during lunch for students that make them have to eat really quickly, which leads to highly caloric lunches. So they're looking into options to make the school lunches healthier. And then they just brought up the stop assignments program that's putting, that's being put on at the community center by the mental health commission. And H P School sent, sent out information about that on the twenty-first. And that is all. Any questions on that? I mean, I very much agree about the condoms, that we discussed this ad nauseam. I hope we can get them in the teen center at least. I mean, obviously, kids shouldn't be, you know, eating condoms, but if you do, they should be available. We talked for a long time about how you dispensers in the bathrooms. I don't know what the cost of that, I don't know if the company would sponsor it, you know, a company to produce the condoms. And, yeah, I, I mean, I think that putting them in the nurse's office is not acceptable to, it's not, it just, it's not a common sense, it's probably not acceptable to a certain group of students, so I'd like to see us change the course.
Oh, I was gonna say, can I interject? Because I don't know what your meeting was, but we did put an order out, we're just waiting for the vendor to send us the dispenser so we can put it back.
Oh, oh, that's fantastic.
But, yeah, so we, but the R system of requisition, put, put it out there to get it and all that, you know, I, it's a little bit of a process. But yes, we, we did purchase, I believe, four, six, I have that, Mr. Lasker, but enough for, for the bathrooms.
For each bathroom?
For, yes, for the bathrooms. We did have a conversation about, because we're also installing the, um, feminine menstrual products, thank you, feminine menstrual, not feminine menstrual products. Trying to be sensitive to that as well. So both of them are gonna be installed. We just have some, we're just having conversations in terms of the menstrual product one, in terms of putting them in which bathrooms, the gender neutral bathrooms, do we also put them in the boys' bathrooms? So we're discussing on where to put a lot of our dispensers, but we do have other.
Would that be for middle school also, the feminine dispensers?
Yeah, so feminine dispensers go for all schools, condom dispensers just for the high school.
Our next meeting is on March ninth.
Okay, so if you can report that back, thank you.
Thank you.
That's great to hear. Thanks, Dr. Nicosia. Sorry, with all, everything going on, I'm, I'm, well, that's it. That's fantastic, that's great.
Any other reports, Victoria?
I think she was, oh, sorry, Allison, sorry.
Yeah, I have an H P F report, and it's very positive, lots of money. So they funded a lot of projects earlier this week. We're gonna allow books for teacher Bartle school, a Bartle school garden. So adding garden beds, or actually trying to do garden that you can harvest. So we'll see how that goes. Denver City Day, camp convention, a decked trip, a trip for Spanish classes or a play, or the trip to a mighty museum. And this one was very controversial, the H P Fling revival. The students, the Fling students wanted to try an in-paint, like a paper copy, or to distribute to students to see if maybe more students would access it. So they agreed to fund two issues as a pilot, to see how well it did. And then the other really cool thing is that we have, well, H P F is submitting two grant proposals to the Kushner estate for funding. They are the Ida Kushner Environmental Sustainability Center and Greenhouse, which will go with the high school, and an outdoor learning pavilion at Irving. So fingers crossed, everything, we're just waiting for everything to be, you know, signed and all of that. But those are two big projects that are coming to the high school and middle school, I guess it is right there, and to Irving's school.
Thank you. I thank the H P F for us, that's awesome. Questions on that, can you go? We're gonna move on, because we think, I lack your question support, so we're gonna go to old business.
I don't, maybe this is a better place for, I don't know, new business, old business, but I don't wanna get impressed by jumping into old business when I said new business. So, ah, do you want to know more?
Well, you know, I, I do, I do, we might want to address a little bit.
Yeah.
You know, this is moving very quickly, and, uh,
Good Irving.
Yeah, I mean, you're, you're, yeah, in Irving modular classrooms. It's not the situation that we've created, I mean, state instead of this schedule. And then we have probably two hundred parents that want to be, put their kids in universal PK, which is free next year. And the first thing to say is, I think we're hopeful that we're gonna find some additional space. I mean, that was certainly the case when my kids were in Irving, and that whole area was closed for the Irving construction. And there wasn't actually extra space that was bound to the pad meeting and pad play, which are very important parts of the day. The other issue that came up in public comment was the issue of why can't we use the parking lots? You know, we also, that was also our first preference. And when we went over there, we did a detailed survey of exactly what property the school owns and what properties some of the neighbors. Unfortunately, it is a public street, and closing it would really take, you know, probably a long time, there have to be traffic studies and everything is part of that. And we also discussed if you can just, seeing if we could just reroute the street a little bit and create other space for the modular classrooms that way. And unfortunately, we don't own the right property, so I don't think there's any chance that it will get done. I think it's a good thing to discuss, I don't think it's gonna get done by the time the families would ideally have to take advantage of the program.
That's great to hear, but you guys even discussed kind of reroute the street? I can't.
Yeah, because, because we are, you know, really, really public, feel free to get in touch with us and discuss concerns and, you know, do some of this money.
I don't believe that parking spots are large enough, even one, one of those. Right? I mean, we measured those, current parking area, that's too small for me. So I mean, we have to show some, we have to stay towards this.
I mean, we want, yeah, we don't trust.
So. So could I speak to the start times a little bit? I mean, I know, Dr. Nicosia, you always write down what people are talking about and get back to people, and I appreciate that. I, I do think there are a couple of points that I thought were interesting, assuming that we go forward, because we're planning to, with the current start, with the revised start times. I do wonder, if you walk in from the triangle, a half an hour is a long walk in the dark. Do we have crossing guards that sort of extend up that far? And would people, while talking to town about that, or talking about some extra lighting? I was not aware that there are that many streets in the triangle without sidewalks. I know where I live, there's mostly sidewalks, there's some stretches without sidewalks, we all walk on the grass, most of the light, the neighbors, you know, I'm sure, go on the grass. But that seems like an issue that we would wanna, wanna deal with. If there's no crossing guards, if the lighting is inadequate, and if kids are walking in the street, you know, on a regular basis in the dark. The other, which I'm gonna ask, or maybe I ask those together, crossing guards, lights. Just to clarify, the modular classroom standing up room that would be used during playtime, during recess, that, that's just the hardtop, right, that would be used? I mean, the playground, that area is still available. I've realized you can't play basketball there, so, yeah.
Yeah, plus there's grass beyond that, so there's part, there's a, she calls it a little stage. If you drive by, there's a little stage, and so,
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
picnic tables, we're doing that, we're dining and all of that. So there's a, there's space behind it, and then the whole new place.
So the main problem is like basketball and dancing walls? That, that's about, okay, I see, I see. And I wonder, you know, as I, of course, as I get these comments, I think, oh, maybe we should. So I wonder if it would be helpful to, to talk at some point about the cost of adding another bus? I mean, I definitely hear a lot of commenters saying, well, we just need to add another bus, how are we letting busing? No, no, I understand, but I would like to hear about why it's impossible. In other words, if we had all the money in the world, it's not.
We still can't, we still can't add another bus because we have to show efficiency of our routes for the New Jersey Department of Education, they won't approve it.
They have to approve it if we don't go through the commission? Or, I mean, they.
They approve our routes.
I, so.
Regardless of whether we own the buses or we go out to bid for our transportation, they approve our routes.
I see, I thought it had to do with where we were getting the bus.
No, 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 they approve literally our routes.
So as we literally had a big gigantic bus that we owned, and a three bus driver, we still couldn't do that.
Right, yeah, so even if, even if somebody don't get their time, with the driver's license, like we're able to, and the transportation, everything, we still cannot do, the D O E will not approve it.
I see, I actually did not understand that, I thought that it was related to like where we got the bus.
No, it's the efficiency of the route.
I see, I wonder why they care so much if you had, if, for example, you had a three bus and a three bus driver? Why do they care?
But, good question, good question. I've been looking for financial, and you'd hear more.
Isn't that academic question in any sense?
I know.
I think that's important for people to, to know, because, you know, when we, we do hear about other schools that manage to move high school start times later without moving the younger kids' start times earlier. I mean, people wrote to us about that, and that's a good point. But my guess is that in that situation, they could have efficient bus routes, because they have a lot of buses, they have a lot of routes, and they could tweak things and still satisfy the D O E. So I just, I wanna make sure that.
A lot of these things, just not to trouble, a lot of these things, what, that, 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 we're gonna talk about when we're on the Zoom with the board members last week?
I'm sure.
I actually learned some of that once again, even though I learned it before. So the fact that D O E will not allow one route assigned, the fact that you reported, it was something I actually kind of had, it's why I had the other day when we were discussing with parents.
Oh, that's good.
Same thing with Richfield, Richfield, whatever that's.
The upper town, yeah, I think it's.
More times the size of all lives, they have many different bus routes. And they, according to, actually, what I'm quoting from parents, they haven't actually, even though it was in the paper, they haven't actually finalized, and they look like they ready to change the time for other schools. That is, you know, shoot out of their research.
That seems to be often the case, when things are reported out in the news.
Yes.
And then the, the second, or less interesting part is not reporting out. You know, that they couldn't do it after all. So I, I appreciate that, I am sure, in fact, I'm sure that this was part of Dr. Nicosia's presentation to the district. I just still didn't really understand the efficiency of the bus routes. So I, I hope that everybody, people who were at that meeting, you know, maybe they're not as dense as I was, but they heard that, because I think, you know, nobody wants schools to start so early. And I, I do want the public to know that, I mean, I stand behind those start times. If someone asks what do board members feel about it, I mean, I stand behind them. But it's, it's not because I think they're great, it's because I think this is the best choice we have. And I know we have board members that have little kids in those schools, so I don't feel like we're saying, eh, it's fine for your kids, it's not fine for ours. You know, it's, it's, it stays. But as, thinking for myself, I stand behind them. But I do think it's helpful to know, just to remember why we can't get another bus. It seems like it would be so easy if we could find the money, but it's not even the money. Okay, I'm going on. Thank you.
Allison, that's our candidate.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you. I wanted to kind of, uh, touch on the fact that the parents obviously are very angered by the fact that they were not consulted previously. And when parents send us this information, it's very difficult because we see with everything that's going on behind the scenes. And we know that when parents are emailing, we are reading the emails and rereading the emails and looking into the things that you send, and all of those things. Like I went down a rabbit hole into the University of Kentucky study that led to counties in Kentucky, that led to bus routes in Kentucky, and went very far. But we are, we are looking into everything you are sending. The thing, though, that I think we need to improve upon, and maybe this is something we can think about, one of the school districts that I read about that started a seven forty-five start time for elementary schools was in Massachusetts. And the piece that I read on it was that the public was very hesitant, the teachers were very hesitant, and it actually wound up working out much better than they had thought. The teachers had positive feedback, and the parents had positive feedback. But what the parents said was that the amount of community support in place to allow that to be successful is what made the transitions easier. So thinking about, you know, the, I'm sorry, I don't remember your name, uh, Karen? On the tri, oh, no, Laura, in the triangle, those are things that maybe we need to investigate. So maybe we could survey Irving and Bartle parents and say, hey, what are the challenges that you are going to face with this start time so that we can start to anticipate community supports for that? One of the things that was a concern in the Massachusetts district was aftercare because they, the, the two, I think they ended at two twenty. They were very worried about having rich, you know, engaging aftercare because their kids were gonna be there for quite a bit of time. So these are things that I think that we can solicit from parents and begin to work on. Because yes, this is our best plan forward, but we need to know what they're worried about, and we need to try to work towards a solution that works for them.
Yeah. That's a great point.
Great point.
That's a great point. Yep. And isn't it true that those conversations have already been starting to happen? And, okay.
So actually, I'm gonna just touch on that point about the crossing guards in the triangle. So I bet with, I'm not sure, I think, whoever reads my newsletter in the world, we saw my last paragraph, my newsletter, it is cast. For this month, the last paragraph, and say, I had a lovely meeting with our new mayor, Ms. Foster, where we picked up where we left off, and it's talking about crossing guards was a topic. And I can start reporting out my conversations with the mayor, that would help as well, and the topics that we do discuss. And one of them was, I did communicate about the start times, pre-K was on there, all of these big initiatives so that the borough could help and support us as well. She said in past, they have tried to go out for, I guess, companies that could provide crossing guards, but apparently it's really expensive for the borough. But they are willing to support more crossing guards, however, they are struggling to get crossing guards. So I will advocate for the borough. If you're interested in being a crossing guard, please consider to apply to be a crossing guard, because the more people that are interested in being a crossing guard, the more crossing guards we can get, because that's not the only area, by the way, that we are considering crossing guards. There's a couple of other areas that were not mentioned from parents on the call that are on my radar, that I also want to improve for increased lighting and crossing guards as well. So that is part of my conversation, and an increase in communication to anybody in the universe that does read my newsletters. I can definitely report on a little section of meeting with the mayor and report back that information as well, if that is up for consideration.
That sounds great, I only wish that I had read the last paragraph. I apologize for our, you know, I mean, ready to drop the paper. You know, that's really good to hear. Thank you. Um, is there consideration given to, like, I know people sort of, we talked a lot about surveys. Is there consideration given to, I know people sort of, we talked a lot about surveys, whether they're really intrusive, whether they weren't given, whether they were given. Hopefully in truth, then I refer to the commenter about the social, uh, mutual learning surveys. Is there, is there something to be given to surveying the urban parents? To ask about, you know, as to maybe go forward with these start times, you know, which we know will be difficult. What do you need? Like what would make it better? I know you've been a lot of surveying already. I need to.
You know, I like that idea. I think that we could definitely work on putting something together with, you know, that if we can get support to that way, then maybe my next month with my meeting with the mayor, I can go through with her as well. And it's because some of the things that I can't do alone.
Right, right.
And so, you know, we can, as a community, pull together and see how we can pull our resources to provide more and more support. So I thought that idea. Thank you, Allison.
Or maybe, yeah, no, it's a fantastic idea. Maybe at least Ms. Nab could send out a call for emails from parents or something. You know, please email your ideas about it next year.
Probably rather do a survey so it's all in the box. So that it's just not a, just make it a little bit easier. So I don't want to put staffs involved.
Yeah, yeah, I see. Your point.
So please don't email the staff right now. We will send that to her.
Oh, sorry.
One comment.
Yeah, the whole business.
One.
Comments.
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 One of the things I kept hearing was about having a, like a, a little earlier than 8:30 start time for everyone, for all the, all the different schools. And I wonder if we'd want to look into that a little bit further because if we're looking at, or if there's a possibility that as a nation, we adopt either daylight saving time or standard time across the board. If we adopt, I think, daylight saving time across the board, it shifts the sunrise to 8:30 in December rather than 7:30. So then we're not even talking about kids coming in here in twilight, that's talking about kids coming in when it's dark. And I know with our, they passed the sunlight, sunlight protection act, but I don't know if they agreed it from keeping standard time or which way, which way.
I don't think that's very speculative.
And it is very speculative.
Yeah.
But at the same time, it's, it's, there's always that possibility. And I, I always like the idea, I, I sort of like the idea that we're doing something that we, we look at the overall shift.
I'm not having daylight saving time anymore, like just, no, no more jumping back, falling back.
Yeah, all right. And then I want the superintendents away. Then I just wanted to add quickly about, I also took notes about the Triangle area and a bunch of blackwood sidewalks. So I remembered that the borough had sent something out about the safe walk to school study. And I looked that up really quickly. It was on November 15th. And there are four areas that were identified in Triangle, Columbia, Cherry, Central and Civil, Central and Sparkle, and Central and Dexter. Helps anyone with their armed plans, I have the sheet down that they should be done in those areas. So maybe there's more coming, but at least we're.
Two different areas, I'm sorry, where, where improvements are planned?
Yes.
Oh, that's fantastic.
And there are pictures of things I've been doing.
Oh, cool.
And I also thought it was an excellent idea to go over some of the questions we overheard about, about the school start times that were answered. And not that it set our minds at ease, but we realized like, okay, I've got those questions and there's, you know, we're limited with what we can do about it. So I also support the plan moving forward. You know, I understand that it's not ideal, you know, if definitely anything earlier, it's not worth my family. But overall, I really do believe that it's the best plan for all of our students. But I think that's a great idea that somebody brought up in the public to maybe put it out there together. That just goes over the questions we had that were answered, but we don't necessarily work up here.
Oh, yeah, like that makes you kind of, yeah. Why can't we do that? Why can't we do that? Sounds like I'm asking every meeting and I, you know, I just get the message from around. Yeah.
So this will run, yes, this kind of, but can we ask, just, I don't know if the board, so you have a talk, but I know they wanted to come a little earlier, so I wanted to give them the floor as well. I'm sorry. Thank you.
Yeah, so we just kind of wanted to voice our opinions as high school students on the later start times. So particularly for people who think about A period and saying that it's an option for some students, it really isn't because there are certain classes that can only be taken during A period. Like in music department, if you're in band or orchestra choir, those are A period over classes. Or if you're interested in taking T P E P, that's also another class that's only offered during A period. So if you're like a child who's been going through this program since third or the fourth grade and by the time you hit high school, it's not really your choice to take that A period class because it's something that you've been doing all those years and that you really want to continue. And because of that, you have to get to school early because it starts at 7:48. And then one of your priorities is that it's an A, A period class. And because of the time it takes specifically for band and orchestra students to set up your instrument and make sure that you're ready for when class begins. And another thing I want to point out is that high school students are involved in a lot of extracurriculars and clubs. So many to the point that I have known students who don't get home sometimes until 9:00 PM from their sports games or from rehearsals. So I think that would be taken into account of the high school student life, they have to take into account when they really want to get to school and when they actually leave school. Not the classroom themselves, but I think that high school students are involved within school.
Yeah, I think with the A period option, students do also for A period because their parents do be able to work earlier and it is like earlier than the regular times. And also high school students and middle school students also have a lot more homework compared to the younger kids. So we do end up sleeping at like earliest 10 or 11, but really usually later. That's like the primary thing we are.
Yeah, speaking of that, I'd say the average high school student sleeps anywhere between 11:00 PM to 1:00 AM, which I think differs very much from the other schools. And I think that that same can be also certain middle school, I think they probably sleep a little bit earlier than the high school students. But I think that this difference is also still very noticeable and very important to consider. Thank you. Uh, Chris, do you have anything about, and Allison?
Yeah, just, just super quickly about Rob's comment about the Dale Center. I mean, the other thing that I hope is going to change over time is that it's more schools start a little bit later. I, you know, I, I hope that was, it's really one of the reasons why we need to end at 3 o'clock. Because, you know, our staff have to get, when they're here, we have sporting events and other things. I, I hope we can maybe give the 15 minutes back. I'm not sure.
I think when we talk to parents on that Zoom call, one of the things I said was that that's not, it's not going to be forever. This is like, well, animals, you have those, if for example, tier busing would change, then we have options to look at every one of them, right? So 30 seconds hopefully will change, you know, you might have to moment. But for me, those, well, the critical thing is getting our students on C the lane into school at the time they need to be. This allows for that, and that's a major issue.
Yeah, I'm just going to add to that real quick. I'm sorry. Is that, you know, there is legislation that is going through for the later start times for high school across the state of New Jersey. And with that, the superintendents collectively around the state are asking for some changes to code and money and things like that to support this change. Because it's, it's easier in some districts to do this than others. So again, there hopefully will be changes to access legislation, disturb to unfold to be implemented. I just don't know what those are yet. Allison?
So if I were into superintendent, and I'm not, but I wanted to write a letter as a citizen to advocate for changes to the busing codes, where would I send that letter?
To the act. Uh, to the acting commissioner within New Jersey Department of Education.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Well, we're going to ask on old business, this is most old business we've ever done on a very snowy night. Uh, I know, well, I was going to use the word, uh, new business. Somebody have new business. We come around all the.
Good Lord, no.
All right. Okay, number comment, back to what I brought to that. You have a public presentation, welcome to public presentation, and has deserved this time to your comments. Uh, everything else is the same as it was earlier. This is an unlimited time, or not the time of the previous. I really strongly request that we keep it short in the interest of the fact that we have people who need to buy distances to get public to ID. It's already a mess out there. So, but, but it gives your time to speak, so obviously, not even that much, just keep that ass. Um, is there anything you would want to speak or?
Would we look, give consideration to having the superintendent leave early and then we take notes and then she watches that? I mean, I thought I want you to, I want you to crash.
I will, I will be okay.
Okay, and Linda, Linda as well, I'm sorry, Linda.
I'll be okay.
Okay, okay.
So, and the whole standing up. Uh, and I just wanted to speak about the student, the high school representative that the representative did bring up. Is that the arts, it isn't fair that you have to have the arts early in the morning. I was an artist at the school, I still am, my children are all in arts. I don't think that that's fair, that you should have to come earlier in the day. Um, that sounds like the district needs to reprioritize the arts rather than making the kids come earlier in the day. Uh, sounds a lot like a failure on the part of the school system. However, that does not, basically, the notice should not be placed on younger children who do need to get 10 to 12 hours of sleep at night. Let's not forget that these kids are also a long connection for their activities that don't end at 8:00 till 8:30 at night. Um, you heard my daughters sleep earlier. Go back to tomorrow, please, 7:30 because she needs that much sleep. She's in the fourth grade. She's not a small young baby at the moment. Uh, she's, you know, into the arts. Uh, when she does her theater program, she doesn't get home until late, then she gets to eat dinner, then she gets to do her homework. And there's a lot of kids who don't do homework in 20 minutes. Some of them, especially when I was a high schooler or even in grammar school, take longer to do homework because we have special needs. We have learning differences than other people. We have ADHD. We have a lot of little things that go on. So I don't think that it is fair to place that responsibility on the younger children who are now going to be suffering as well. So when I say, nobody's saying that we're going to take away time from high schoolers, we're not saying that at all. What we're saying is this is a vocalistic approach and listen to what everybody else is saying and take that into consideration because this is really a big issue, a big problem and, and, and burden on families. And younger children do need their sleep, a 15 minutes is a lot. It's, 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 my kids get up at 6:30 in the morning right now to get to school. They have to be up at 6:00 o'clock in the morning and they're already struggling. The sun is not even up at that time. So please take that into consideration. And what's it going to take to have a go on this? Because this is clearly not a good plan at all. It's not the best plan. If the best plan is garbage, we're going to be staying here, then that's what we deserve. Let's come up with something that actually does work and let's listen to everyone's voices here. Thank you.
Uh, online, is he Abby?
Hi, this is Abby Sternkardt now. I live on Parker Street. Uh, I know you're all wanting to get home, so I'll try to be quick. Um, I'm just trying to understand this full conversation and some of the limitations that you're presenting about the start times. And you are, you know, telling us that we could potentially advocate to the Department of Education for busing considerations. So I'm trying to understand the limitation of adding another route. Um, and you're saying it won't be approved by the Department of Education. And if possible, can you just elaborate on that more so that if we are going to advocate, we know what we should be asking for? Um, why, why they have said that it's not a possibility and whether exceptions can be made to that? And hasn't been directly asked so that we can, you know, address that and advocate for our school being, our school system being an exception based on equity for all students? So basically, I'm trying to understand how we can help you get, you know, an additional bus to, to address some of these issues. But we don't, I, I don't really understand it well enough to even, you know, know why they would have said no in the first place or if that's been asked fully. So thank you.
Sarah?
Yeah, I'll make it real quick. Um, I have a really quick question and, you know. What was it?
Nothing.
Oh, sorry, sorry. Um, and I, you know, I appreciate the in, I appreciate Allison, you know, kind of looking into that literature. I think it's really helpful to see what others have done. And, you know, I think what we heard tonight about the Triangle and that's one of many, I think. And so the more we can get, go back to the people really understand what they think that impact is going to be, is going to, I think, really be helpful. Um, a couple of things to mention though, you know, there's the bus issue. Certainly, you know, rather than asking for another bus, there's the option to ask for an exception for the route requirement. And so I think that's something we should certainly look into. But even maybe, you know, easier and then something not easier, it's not that it's easy. But, you know, we talk about how to make all of this work. And there was an option which would be putting schools ending after 3:00 PM. And, you know, that was kind of in our discussion with, with, as it was referred to, that we had with the board and the couple and Dr. Nikosia. Um, there is the, the option, right, to try and renegotiate that, so we have a time that's a little after 3:00 PM. Other districts have done that, but teachers can part of the same union. And so when we brought that up, that was a nonstarter, no, we can't do that. But that certainly is something that, that others have done. And so, you know, again, people just aren't ready for this. We don't know the facts. We haven't really evaluated it at all. You're going to have children in aftercare for longer. There's all sorts of things, and especially even we're talking about the busing of those that are pretty vulnerable. Um, the younger ones, how we're later going to have. I mean, it's, the, the impacts really are great and I just, we don't know without, without the impacts. And, you know, we haven't really tried to get into that. So I would just say the two routes where, you know, you think about, actually three routes where you think about incorporating A period and prioritizing the arts. If you do that, that's really, because, you know, we already met our stated goal, which was originally, I think it's 8:40 or whatever it is for the start time. You know, we're actually surpassing the goal there, if you can really think through a way creatively. That we prioritize the arts incorporated into the actual school day, that's considered, you know, part of the, part of the, the time period. So, you know, I think that's an option, you know, an exemption for the route requirement. But also, you know, like what everyone else has done or several other school districts have done, you know, a little bit after 3:00 PM would get us there as well. And so, I also just want to state, you know, I've been really vocal about this, but my family is, is actually going to be one of, I mean, certainly it's going to have an impact, but less effective compared to some of those that we've heard on the line tonight. And so, I just want to say, I think it's a privilege, really costly child care, and that's the only thing that's going to help me through this transition. And I'm just really sorry for those that, you know, are going to have to deal with the impacts. And I think they're going to be a lot bigger than, than we think. And, you know, again, I certainly appreciate folks seeking to understand and diving in deeper. I think we have to just keep doing that, otherwise I'm just really worried about, about the impact. And I just don't think we want to be a year from now, kind of like, oh brother, what did we do? So.
Thank you. Thank you. You have no other hands raised online. So I'm going to make motion for adjournment.
Sorry.
All the papers?
Hi.
Thank you very much. Thank you for publishing the first single address.
Good night, everyone.